To board order. And. I see we're not being recorded, so thank you for that. We'll start with the Fledge of Allegiance. Fledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible liberty and justice for all. Okay. So Secretary will please note the role and. I think that will help that along with the attendance with the participants on the side. You have. Everybody there, Ms. Pickett, you'll be taking notes of who's on there as well.
Yes, I have.
I think we have all our members. Or we could just have our secretary call the role and just make sure that all of our board members are here. And we'll just do that with a quick roll call vote. Ms. Castle, would you like to call the role, please?
I think we can be, are we good just by visual?
We can do that, too. That's fine. All right, we'll do it that way. And we'll move on to an executive session announcement. And I will announce that we had an executive session last evening. To discuss personnel issues. So there was that. It was done remotely as we're all doing everything these days. So it was that. And we'll move on then very. I'm sorry?
Bob, can you hear me?
I can.
Yes.
I cannot get in. I. It's letting me in, then it's letting me out. Now I can't even mute myself. So I'm going to go out and try to get back in.
Okay.
Okay, that's why I didn't answer you because I couldn't unmute myself and now I can't mute myself. So. All right, I'll be hopefully back in just a few.
All right, well, we'll wait just a minute for to start the public comment until you get back in, all right?
Okay.
We're not rushed. We'll just hold on. We do have one piece of business from the last meeting that doesn't really fit anywhere neatly, but I will take care of now during this sort of interim. I do want to apologize to Brenna Mayberry. Last meeting, I did mention that she was a junior and not a senior. She didn't correct me. She was too polite to do that. But. I did say that she was a junior and she didn't correct me. So I do want to apologize for her in public as I did make the mistake in public. So. Just clean up that little mistake there. So. I knew it as soon as I said it, but didn't fix it then. So I'm fixing it now. See if.
All right, I'm back in. And speaking of Brenna, I just. If she's on, just want to let her know I just came across a picture of her. I didn't realize she was on the same softball team as Riley. Many years ago, when we were looking at pictures and Riley was like, that's Brenna Mayberry. It's like, oh my god. Little Brenna Mayberry, like eight years old or something. So pretty cute.
Yes, thank you. Not to worry about the junior thing. I didn't worry about it at all. And I do, I do remember playing softball, Riley.
I do. Yeah, I did. Well, she remembered. I didn't. I didn't remember all the girls' names, but. Anyway, you were adorable. You still are, but you were a really cute little girl.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There to be back on task. Thank you very much. Yes, and now it's time for public comment. Do we have, I don't see anything under Q and A, but do we have any requests for public comment? On items on the agenda for this evening? See nothing under Q and A. This real quick, just to make sure. Nothing open, nothing answered, nothing dismissed. So we'll move directly on then to the report of the superintendent. Dr. Shirk, if you go ahead and get started for us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. At this time. The. Administration would like to approve the professional staff leave of absence as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Is it too late to make a motion to combine all personnel items?
Technically, yes, it's your motion and a second on 4.1. Well, we can do, we can do 4.2 to 4.4, but we'll do 4.1 by itself.
Sounds good.
So a motion and a second, motion from Patty and a second from Mr. From Al H on 4.1 on leave of absence. So do we have any questions on 4.1? Hearing no questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no and state your name. So noted without objection.
All right, I'll make a motion to combine 4.2 to 4.4.
Second.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second for retirement. And. Can you quickly go through the support staff retirement? Please, 4.3, if you don't mind. Yes, that's right. Okay, I do want to point out as a kind of a note on the side. Mr. Kelly, Ms. Hicks, DeWorowski, these three have been friends for a long, long time. Friends of mine, I've known them for all three of them for most of my time. Many of you know that I've been associated with the district for many, many years. Six, our kids were in Young Marines. Mr. Kelly has been along around for quite some time. DeWorowski, longtime friend. So. I wish them all three very well, all the happiness in their retirement. So. No questions, just that one statement for the three of them, wishing them the very, very best in their retirements. So does anybody else have any questions or comments on these, on these three?
Just a comment. Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. I should not have combined them. They certainly deserve the accolades that you provided. So thank you for catching them.
No worries, no worries at all. Okay, there being no other questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no and state your name. Okay, so without objection.
Moving on to action items for business. We're asking the board to adopt the proposed final general budget for the 2021 school year in amount of $68,692,589. Due to the COVID-19, the purpose of the final budget is being presented with no tax increase. The millage will remain at 38.102. The estimated ending uncommitted fund balance at June 30th, 2021 will be approximately 7.3%.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, maybe more for the public than the board because the board has heard this speech from me every year. I never suggest what you should do. I'm not a policymaker, but I do want to make it clear to the public that this doesn't mean that this is final, even though it's called a proposed final budget. The board has tagged on a final budget by June 30th and this budget, and I'll leave it to the administration, I suspect could very well move.
Thank you. We do have a motion. I did hear Patty's motion. Did we get a second on that?
Second.
Ooh, that was, that was close. I see your.
Give it to Dr. Nipper.
I think I heard Al Leach's voice.
I'm louder.
I think I heard Al's voice, sir.
It's been a rough day. I want to have something feel good.
Oh, is that right? Okay, yes, that's true. That's true. Dr. Never, okay, we'll give the nod to Dr. Never then. Patty with the motion and Dr. Nipper for the second on this. As, as. Mr. Davis said, you know, there is a motion in this and we did talk about the amount of the budget. And you know how this is still a moving target and you know, the challenges, everybody recognizes the challenges that we're going through right now. And the work that everybody is putting into this budget. We know, we know that there are a number of questions about what's going on and who knows. You know, what's on, who's on first and what we're doing and how are we going to get there and all of that sort of thing. We're all watching, we are all watching what's going on in Harrisburg, what's going on in Washington, what's going on. In Norristown, what's going on here? We're all trying to figure this out and doing the best that we can. Our hats, you know, we, we appreciate all the hard work that Dr. Shirk is doing, that Mr. Nestor is doing, and we're all trying to get through this together and making the best plans that we can and doing our due diligence, making sure that. We're trying to cover contingencies and make responsible, reasonable plans so that pretty much whatever happens, we've got a plan, we've got a contingency, we've got some way of covering or addressing most things that can be expected, some things that aren't expected. And we can kind of go with whatever happens. Because nobody knows exactly what's going to happen. We have general ideas of things that we can expect. And that's what we're planning for and that's where we're going. Please look at this. Please know that we're doing our best to be good stewards of your money. Because it's not just your money, it's our money as well. And we're trying to make the best decisions, not only for the children, but also for the taxpayers, for the teachers, for everybody that's concerned, because we all want to get through this together. It's part of, it's a community. It's not just words to us. It's not, it's not just. You know, hollow expressions. We are part of this community. We do care. We do take this very, very seriously. So we hope you understand and know that we do take everything that we're doing seriously. We do think about every decision that we're making. And we are doing the very best we can with what we have, the information that we have. And we think that this is as responsible as we can possibly be with the information that we have. So with that, does anybody else have any other questions about this budget before we vote on it? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. No order without objection. Maybe not, moving on to our next item.
I'd like to make a motion that we combine 5.2 and 5.3.
Second.
We have a motion from Patty and a second from Al that we combine 5.2 and 5.3. Does anybody have any questions on these two items? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no and state your name, please. Very good. Most passes without objection.
Moving on to action items for education, we're asking in order to approve the conference attendance item as submitted.
So moved.
You missed, you didn't jump on this one. He was all over the budget while he doesn't jump on this one.
Second. I'll say second. I'm slow. I'm still slow.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion for, motion from Mrs. Graham, a second from Mr. Leach on 6.1, the conference attendance. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this one?
Yeah, I do. Did they lower the price at all since this turned into an online? Like, was this something that was supposed to be in person, you know, like at Hershey or something? And just curious.
It's not scheduled at Hershey. It is scheduled in Valley Forge, was scheduled in Valley Forge. There has always been an online option for this conference. At the same rate. So no, the price did not decrease, but there is no travel associated.
Okay, all right, I can only see part of it. So I can't, I couldn't see that it was in Valley Forge. So, all right, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions on this? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those in favor say no and state your name, please. All right, so without objection.
Moving, moving on to committee items. We're asking the board to accept the Operations and Facilities Committee meeting minutes for March 10th, 2020 as admitted.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the March 10th meeting of the Operations Facility Committee meeting. All those in favor signify by, I'm sorry, motion and a second. There may be any questions on this? Not? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Very good. So without objection.
Okay, at this time, I know we talked a little bit about this last time, but Operations and Facilities Committee report. That meeting was held on the 14th of April. Mr. Ling, would you like to comment anything about that particular meeting?
Operation facilities, that was the.
Pretty much our post.
Budget.
Our post-COVID budget, which now we have our proposed final.
Yeah. And that was the one we talked, that was the one we talked about the different, the different options in the cost savings budgets. Right?
Correct.
Yes. It was, it was, it was a, it was a difficult meeting to look at because we, we. As you know, there was just lots of holes punched in our budget of all the different ways that we were going to be losing revenue. And it was, well, as tough as it was to hear it, I mean, it was, it was tough, it was hard news basically for Mr. Nestor to be presenting it to us as well. Not a lot of fun for him, I'm sure, to have to give it to us. There was one thing after another, basically, as we went through it. Revenue impact. Just going through, I'm just trying to go through, I have a copy of it here that given to us. Going through it. Sorry, I'm not as fluent in the numbers as I could have been. And, you know, everything on the plus side is all proposed and maybe and perhaps. And, and, but, you know, the other stuff that we were looking at, the other things that we looked at were very real, you know, because we had looked at things that we were planning to do for the district, things we were hoping to do for the district that, you know, maybe now we don't have the money for because all these, these holes in it. And things we might have to put off. And, you know, we're, we're continuing to look at those things and we continue to plan on them. An additional people service administrator, the French teacher, the autistic teacher. Safe school software, sub support, between those things, replacing our tiree, these were all things we were planning and hoping to do. That, as of that meeting, the operations facility were things we were considering putting off. Additional buses, where as you know, every year we have a rotation of buses that we, that we basically plan on buying three new buses every year, replacing our fleet to keep it up to date. Some of these buses are 15 years old. Because we have a large fleet. And, you know, putting those things off, other things that we're doing to try and save money to stretch our budget and not go into our, or not go into our budget reserve too deeply, try and save as much as we can do. But the, the work that we're doing and the budget that we just passed, the goal is, and what we have worked with together with Dr. Shirk, together with the administration and the school board. The decision that we have taken jointly together is that a 0% increase for this year. That is what we are doing together. And that is where we're going to be. So. It's, it's not an easy thing and there's hard choices yet to be made, but that's where we're heading. That's where we're going. And you know, we're going to make the decisions it's going to take to get there. And it's a as we said, it's a difficult thing, but it's where we need to be, that's what we need to do. And we're going to continue to look at the programs for the children. We're going to continue to look at the things that we need to do for the teachers and the staff. And we're going to get there and we're going to do it together. And I just, I'm so very, very grateful for the staff that we have, for the administration that we have, and for the board, the team of people that we have on this board. It's, it's phenomenal to be part of a group that is so serious about the work that we do together. So that's what I have to say about the facilities and operations committee. Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. Moving to Athletics and Co-Curricular Community Relations Committee, that meeting took place on April 21st and we're asking Mrs. McIntyre to please report out on, on that meeting.
Sure. There were a few parts of this meeting to discuss, so I'm going to take them slightly out of order and finish with one that we wanted to bring to the full board for discussion tonight. So the second point that we brought up, Dr. Harney had brought Policy 900, which was regarding public attendance at school events. There was a request for clarity as far as the wording for attendance at school-sponsored events that are attended by the public, specifically how districts interpret, how our district interprets volunteers, school board members, and district staff with regard to free admission into events. Dr. Harney, Mr. Anspock, and Mr. Durenzo agreed to provide new verbiage to be brought to the policy committee tonight for further review, which they have done. In addition, there was a part that we were discussing as far as signage. That involves pole flags, exterior signs, interior logos for buildings, wind screens for the fencing at the Varsity baseball field. And it was suggested to take this into three parts to split the cost up. The total cost of the project was $19,977. And so the initial phase is scheduled to take place, is considered being scheduled to take place fall of 2020. There's specific dollar figures here. That one, 6742. And then another piece in spring of 2021 at 5855. And the final phase, summer of 2022 at 7380. And these funds are going to be considered to be supported through the Market Street fundraising efforts, the sports efforts. So that's up for discussion. There was also, Mr. Anspock shared initiatives that the athletic department is doing to celebrate the senior athletes. Probably many of us have seen on social media and the Mercury's been reporting on these and the posts about just individual profiles of the students that share their basically just little tidbits about their careers and just bringing light to, to their efforts. None of us can imagine what it's like because this is something none of us have ever gone through. And so I just really applaud the student athletes and I applaud the efforts of the district administration to celebrate them because they so deserve it. And then the last piece that we talked about, and that's for discussion tonight. Just going to read right from the report. Mr. Durenzo presented the concept of recommending a company called Edge Click Advertising to provide single banner advertising to our redesigned website. Our website provider, Blackboard, and Pots Grove's Technology Department are currently building and uploading our data for the site. Program mirrors the district's current single-site venue advertising, similar to our agreement with Market Street Sports. Based on projections from the views that we currently experience on our site, the projected revenue would be approximately $5,000. This would be nearly half of what our annual share is to maintain our website. The agreement would include a 50/50 split of revenue. The district has the right of refusal for any advertisement, which would only appear on the front page of our site. Edge Click assured the district that all advertisers would be specific to the southeastern Pennsylvania region. And the committee agreed to bring this to the board for full discussion. And that's the end of the report.
Thank you, Mrs. McIntyre, for that information. I just wanted to, you know, give the board an opportunity, obviously, to, 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 to hear from the committee. And also, you know, one of the things that we'd like to do is obviously discuss it tonight and bring it as an action item at our next board meeting in May so that we can start to move on, on that process as we continue to market ourselves throughout, throughout, not only, you know, our area, but, but possibly extending outside of that area as well.
One comment I'd like to discuss with the board on this particular project is, obviously, if we sign with Edge Click and we have the right, as it says, to decide what goes on for the websites for advertising and such like that, is, is there a way to have it worded in the contract that will give first preference to our local businesses before we open up to the national southeastern Pennsylvania region business? Like, we had discussed like a GEICO, for example, right? But there may be a small business that wants to do it instead of a national brand like a GEICO. Or if a particular contractor or whatever we pick is allowed to go on this site that's educational, as we said, a lease goes first through a choice of local vendors versus going through broad southeastern Pennsylvania region vendors.
Would anybody from the committee like to, like to weigh in on that?
I might be able to share a little light on that. Their first preference is because it's a larger style of advertising where the with the revenue. Them, like Drexel Online, Arcadia out. Local. That doesn't, that doesn't preclude local businesses to be able to advertise. It's just the fee may be a little bit higher for this type of advertising than, than some of our local, local advertisers might want to, you know, put their, put their toe in the water, so to speak. But we have the right to refuse anybody. I mean, if we have four advertising, they would rotate on a banner type, you know, on a single banner. So there is opportunity for smaller businesses, but what they have found through their market research is, you know, the regional, the regional companies tend to move towards this type of advertising because the number of views that they are, they are, you know, that gets seen.
Gary, you had just mentioned, but I'm sorry, you broke up for a second on my feed. You had mentioned a couple of places that have something very similar or have this. Could you list them again so that I can look up them? Could you list them again so that I can look up them during the next two weeks before we vote?
Sure. Most of them are in western part of the state, but locally
They'll look the same.
Perkyomen Valley is one of them. Here, I have a whole bunch of them. Newcastle, Newcastle School District, Sharpsville School District, West Middlesex School District, Butler area, Freeport area, Karn City, Seneca Valley, South Butler County. That good?
Yeah, it's plenty. I, I just needed a couple, just so I could see what it actually looks like.
Okay. And you'll see some of those, you know, the monthly traffic, you'll see school districts, we tried to compare apples to apples. We tried to find school districts that are commensurate with our size and, and they did the analytics looking at our website and how many hits and views that we receive. And that's kind of how, that was what the, you know, the revenue projections were based upon.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments or thoughts from the rest of the board?
I don't want to appear overly picky, Yoon, but I understand why you want to focus on regional advertising. But I don't think we want to exclude, for instance, we have the Navy represented by our president, board president. And if the military wants to put a recruiting advertising, I don't think we want to exclude them. And maybe, maybe that's being overly persnickety about the interpretation of local.
I, I think, again, I think that's one of those areas that we would all take a look at and agree upon. I think certainly our armed forces would be, they would be a tremendous addition to the, to the front of our website. Any of the branches, but that, I was just giving you a couple of examples that I've seen from the other sites. And so, yes, you know, the armed Navy, Army Marines, et cetera. I mean, even though they're a national federal branch, that they're also, they're also regional and local as well to us as, as well.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. I just didn't want to be, maybe I'm being overly legalistic.
Now's the time for questions now.
That's right.
I do have a question for you, Gary. The advertising is going to be geared more towards parents and not the students, correct?
That's correct.
So it's not going to be on the, it's not going to be in Schoology or something that the students are answering, but it's just on the website for
Only on the front page of our website. So the first page, that's the only place that it would appear.
That's the only, oh, that's the only page. It won't appear deeper in?
Nope.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
The only other comment I had, if we're done that section, is the three-phase section. If we're done with the 50/50, I'd like to ask a question about the three-phase proposal for the signage and our campus section.
Yep. Proceed.
All right. So in that particular one, I understand, obviously, we had a discussion in regards to budgeting. Obviously, Mr. Nestor had mentioned about our budget and what we're doing now to try to make sure we're staying at a zero for next year and everything like that. My question would be to the board to consider using for phase one only at this present time to use Market Street money. So we're looking at 6742, so we could do this for the fall. This way, it would not count towards the budget. We would not have to use any of those funds or those, you know, the funds we're using to make a zero budget. We have $112,000 currently in Market Street, which is obviously sustained yearly. So using 7242 probably would still keep us at an even point or maybe still going higher at 112. So that's what I want to ask the board to consider for voting next time is using for phase one, 6742 out of the Market Street. If anybody has any issues with that?
No, I agree, Al.
Mr. Nestor, do you have any thoughts on that in, in regards from a budgetary accounting?
So the, the balance of Market Street funds resides in our general fund fund balance. So it's there. Mr. Leach is correct. We do replenish it to the tune of about roughly $20,000 a year, I would say. So, you know, it, the money is there if that's how, how the board wishes to use. It's, it's there.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Mr. Nestor, any other questions regarding anything from the athletic co-curricular committee? Okay, with that, with that being said, then, any questions can be directed, obviously, you know, back, back to the committee over the next two weeks, but our, our goal would be to have those two action items on for the May 12th meeting. Okay, moving on. We have the curriculum integration technology committee, which also met on the 21st. And Mrs. Custer, would you please report out on the meeting that was held then?
Sure. Right, so we had a set agenda, but we had quite a few questions from parents concerning the grading practices and homework and everything, you know, just having to do with all the online schooling that's going on. So we decided to open up the meeting with that. And there were quite a few questions from the attendees. We did have parents that had attended the meeting and they were putting questions in the, in a little Q and A spot in Zoom and it was hard to answer them as they were coming in. So what we did is Dr. Sherk and Mr. Voorhees both responded in ways that they, as best as they could, and then circled back to those parents the next day, or maybe even that night, I'm not sure, and did answer all of their questions as, as they had asked them. So basically, what what it came down to was, I know they, we all knew the, the district was working on everything, trying to get a continuity in the education and that it was basically a, a work in progress, but as of the next day, I do believe that most parents had, were happy with the answers that they received. So our, the next thing we worked on was Algebra II in the middle school. So as probably most of you all know, there was been an issue with some students being advanced enough in math in the middle school that they take Algebra II in eighth grade. And so in the past, some of those students were being bused to the high school and losing class time because of transportation time. So what was proposed is that they add an Algebra II class to the middle school. And in order to do so, they did have to change the schedule of the teacher who's teaching it, so that she could fit it into her schedule. So that was shared with us. Just the, you know, the benefits of having, keeping them in the, the building as opposed to sending them out. The approximate numbers of the students that would be taking the class, which they felt was about 15 to 20. And just, you know, the benefits of them being able to take this and then advance even more quickly when they got to ninth grade and not have to worry about, you know, sort of being behind the eight ball when it came to the advanced calculus classes and stuff. So that will become, that will come to the full board and we will vote on that at a later time. So I would assume maybe in May, I guess, I'm not sure. Because they would like to get this started as soon as possible. There is no teacher. We don't need to hire anybody. We don't, you know, it's, it's, all the cost is absorbed within the, the middle school. So next thing we talked about was the personal finance class, which there, we pretty much have it, I think, decided on how it's going to look once it's up and running. But as of right now, obviously, we're going to have to table that until we know for sure where our finances are within the next year and two years. So we did go over some of the models and the model that we pretty much, I think, all sort of agreed on, but of course that can change over time, was to maintain the 23.49 credit graduation requirement, but we would decrease social studies from three, four credits to three credits. And then the students would be required to take a half-credit personal finance elective with career exploration components and then choose another 0.5 credit elective, hopefully in, you know, in social studies. It does open up the social studies department a little bit to offer some different electives. And it does, it could also, it will reduce the class sizes in social studies, which have been pretty high. So there was a survey sent out to the, to the community, which was predominantly pro the class. And there were some, some good comments that the that everyone left, including, you know, one was asking, well, can you do this as a night class for adults? So anyway, obviously, we've made, made no decisions, but all the legwork is done. So when the time comes and we can offer it, we pretty much have everything in line. We would need to hire a new business teacher. So obviously, that's something that's not going to be happening this year and maybe not even next year. We'll have to wait and see. The last thing we discussed was high school iPads, which was brought up before. It's still an ongoing discussion. The discussion basically centers around switching the high school over to iPads rather than laptops. The iPads would have keyboards, stylus pens, all kinds of fun stuff. But that too is on hold because the plan had been to actually show us one of these iPad Pros or whatever they are at work and show us, you know, everything it can do, but being that we can't have in-person meetings, that also is on hold. So that will be demonstrated to us and we're going to continue that, that discussion. That was really about it. Does anybody have any questions on anything?
The only thing I wanted to ask, and I hope I'm not putting anybody on the spot here. I don't know if this should be either Dr. Sherk, Dr. Ziegler, or Mr. Voorhees. Could you go over, obviously for the record now, what our new guidance for grade calculation is going to be for the final grades?
The grading guidance, and Daniel, I want to ask you to jump in here. I think we're looking at 30/30% for the first two marking periods, 10% for the midterm, and then 15% for the third and fourth marking period. And there's also particular, you know, stipulations there that are built in for student involvement in, in, in work that is, is shown to our, our teachers. And also, there is a component built in that, that there, there'll be no one failing the fourth marking period, particularly based, based on our situation, but we ask, we are asking our students to produce work and throughout this time period, so that they can continue to really devalue that. The, the grading piece for us is that there's a value on both sides. There's a value for our students who, who care about their education and want to do well, even in the toughest times, and our teachers who really value the assessment piece. And I think what we did over the last month, and it was sort of, as, as Mrs. Custer, Custer mentioned, it was a work in progress. And we, we took into account, parent input and our teachers and our counselors along the way, as well as our curriculum instruction group as well. So Mr. Voorhees, if you want to weigh in on anything I might have missed regarding that process, feel free.
Yeah, I, I think you summarized it very well, Dr. Sherk. We, the original guidance that we put out was very beginning of April, before we knew about school being closed for the remainder of the year. So with school being closed for the remainder of the year, with that announcement coming through, it did cause a, a need for some revisions to be made. So those revisions were shared out among teachers and we really wanted to provide maximum flexibility, if you will, so that teachers, really, students have multiple opportunities to show and demonstrate their work. They have opportunities to submit that work, get feedback on that work from their teacher. And the teacher can use students, if they're using that feedback, that should be to the benefit of a student. So really, what we tried to do is, is form and craft in a way that would benefit students and not harm students.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Voorhees and Mr. Leach. Good question there. I have a related question with that. Power School, is that currently, or is it being worked on so that it's reflecting the new balance of quarters and midterm, or is that still not, you know, so basically I'm asking, is Power School currently reflects the true final grade or not yet?
Dr. Sherk, if I may, it's, it's really a two-part process, Mr. Lapik. There's parts, really, the, the at the district level that need to be handled. And then teachers each individually need to also change their, at least at the secondary level, some of their, their information within the system. So we shared that out with our teachers as of last week. I know at the district level, it's been handled, but I'm not sure to what degree all teachers have accomplished that yet. So I would say, please let me follow up on that. We can do a check on that tomorrow. But to the best of my knowledge, I'm going to say it's not there yet. So it's probably not demonstrating what those final grades will look like. But I can report out on that definitely tomorrow.
All right. Thank you very much. It just, just so parents know whether, you know, what they're looking at is accurate or there's going to be, you know, the which usually happens towards the end of the year. So, all right, thank you. And Mr. Lapik, to your point, I think what we can do is, once, you know, Mr. Voorhees alluded to this, you know, once, once we know that for sure, you know, we can send out building, building specific, you know, announcements so that the parents know, you know, at our middle school and high school, that, 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 that process has been completed. All right. Thank you very much. Actually, I do have another question with the Algebra II. And I apologize, I had to leave the curriculum meeting halfway through for a separate college meeting. The, and I know Algebra II is only based on the new schedule, only be offered during the first period. And so that's going to possibly conflict with students wanting to take certain encores or a second language. And what I wasn't quite sure about is, do the different languages, are they only offered at one period in the middle school, the level one, or do they have two periods for each of them so that students will still have an opportunity to have a, have Algebra II and a world language?
To the best of my knowledge, they're, they're all held within that first block. However, these are really, as we build through these models with the middle school, these are really student by student decisions that would be made with their families. So for example, if you have a student who's very interested in, in math and/or math careers at some point, that would be a conversation through guidance, through administration, teachers and families and students that we'd have that conversation and evaluate best pathway for those individual students. Really, that really occurs now. And they have those, those conversations across the board.
I won't speak for Mr. Voorhees, if you'd like to jump in, but traditionally, there has been enough interest in each language to offer two periods. First thing, in an eighth grader's schedule, they would have two different periods where level one languages are all offered during that time.
Okay, so somebody could have the Algebra II and assuming there wasn't a conflict with ELA and whatnot, have that second, have a language as a second class. Okay, thank you. Okay. Any more questions or discussions from the curriculum integration technology committee? If not, we'll move to If not, we'll move to uh New Business eight point one.
I have one piece of new business, so just a quote, general question, obviously, with our new system and everything being online. Uh we're doing the attendance via that that I believe a question of the day and such like that, how is that working? Is it going well? Are we having any issues? Are we finding that our attendance is where it's expected to be?
Uh I think I think Dr. Ziegler is is with us and Mr. Boyer, uh I I know we 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 meet, we uh we meet uh weekly. Uh but I don't want to steal their thunder because I think there's some good information on what our what our families and our students have done over the last the last four weeks.
So this is the, this is Bill Ziegler, so at the high school, our daily attendance on a regular day hovers anywhere between ninety-two and ninety-four percent. When we first started off and right around now, I think we're hovering in the upper eighties. Um and which is pretty good, uh not where we want to see it, but you know, we're really pleased and the number of students. That don't have access is really, uh we've really worked hu- hard to make sure that students have access. And currently, we only have two students right now that their hotspots are shut down, and we're working to get some hotspots, everybody else we believe has that. So our our daily attendance percentage is typically, it runs anywhere, we have hit the seventies, but we're also way up in the eighties on a regular and consistent basis.
I have a question if we're done with that. Uh any of the principal, I'm not sure who's on uh for administration, uh building administration, but do we have any knowledge, uh feedback from school counselors? How was the social emotional stuff going? Are they reaching out to the kids that they normally would uh see on a regular basis? Um you know, for emotional behavioral issues, are they still connecting with them? And those, especially at elementary level, uh socially, are there, are they implementing? Uh I know elementary counselors like to do lunch bunches kind of thing, are they uh taking advantage of Zoom? Um and and connecting with with a few kids to have whatever type of interaction we can have?
Would any of our principals or directors like to weigh in on Mr. Parker's question, please?
I I can speak for the middle school, you know, I know that um our counselors do have regular sessions with their group as normal as possible, you know. Kids zoom in and they zoom out of different groups, also, you know, there is individual type of SCL things going on with. Um kids that are, you know, they're they're not engaging as much as we would like them to, for example, you know, today and like for Thursday or Fridays. Mr. Kirby and I will, you know, hold reward luncheons for kids that are centered around like, how are you doing? Is there anything that can help? And then we connect them with the counselors, but you know, they're going on the same way, they're just, you know, in a different space right now, but you know. I would say that the same kids that routinely meet with our guidance department are using their office hours to continue that process.
This is, this is Bill Ziegler from the high school, so very similar to Matt, we actually have a list of students that our our counselors have intentionally been reaching out to every week. Uh we have did a great job, they're doing a small group series called coping with COVID and. Uh each each like week, there's so many groups set up that kids can sign up for, like dealing with disappointment and dealing with anxiety. We hosted a virtual town hall meeting around mental health and how to talk to kids about this. I I know that our counseling departments work really hard to connect with students that might be, you know, fragile and and that need that connection and that support. In addition to that, you know, uh just socially emotionally, our teachers uh starting next week, actually, a lot of them started this week already. We're starting uh like clubs and activities, so our key club, our student government, uh we have, we have a chess club, a running club. And obviously, they're all virtual, they're not around each other, everything's through Zoom, uh but just clubs, sort of like pride clubs that keep students active. And our student government is actually hosting a district-wide um a spirit week. Uh and I think Monday is Marvel Day, Monday Marvel Day to celebrate our superheroes or our medical professionals. And I know that the middle school and some of our other schools are gonna jump into that, so uh doing some really nice work and just keep everyone connected and and social and interactive.
And I can, I can speak for the elementary level as well, um and echo a lot of the same uh activities that uh Mr. Boyer and Dr. Ziegler shared. Um our our counselors are still running groups, are still um doing social skills uh instruction and and social emotional wellbeing checks with with a lot of students and families. Uh they're also continuing to work very closely with uh with creative health and and other mental health service providers in the community. Uh to to connect families with students with uh services uh where those are are needed and appropriate.
If I, uh if I could add one other thing, this is Bill Ziegler, tomorrow, actually, our high school faculty and staff are having a professional learning time. Uh with Jazz Fenchel in Montgomery County uh mobile access centers, she's with the Montgomery County Mobile Crisis Unit, and she's gonna be talking to our teachers. About how to support students through COVID nineteen and even, you know, even though in self-care, so we're even working with our staff to bring that in and support that.
I appreciate hearing that uh from you three, thank you very much, glad that's happening.
Thank you, any any other new uh business from any of our other board members?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um just a couple of things, I just want to remind everyone that um. Mail-in ballots are freely available in Montgomery County, and you, all you have to do is apply for it. Um go on uh, I don't remember the name of the website, but it's pretty easy, if you just Google, you know, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania mail-in ballot, it takes you right there. Um the primary is supposed to be on June second, but you know, we all know how important it is to to vote. Even though it's a primary and it's pretty clear who's gonna be running for president, you know, on both sides right now. Um but still, you know, get out and vote, uh the second thing I I just wanted to bring up, um I just wanted to to um. Give a shout out to everyone who's been um volunteers and employees, staff alike that have been um. Doing the uh the the meal distribution on Monday mornings over at West and Lower. Uh everyone works really hard, chart wells and the cafeteria workers are just amazing um with the amount of meals that they put out. Cindy Hauntz is just on top of everything and um then all the volunteers that are there, um at least at Lower. Um Mrs. Kohler, Mrs. Jones, um uh Mr. Nester, uh and then um. Myself, Mr. Parker, and uh Tony was there last uh this this past week, and it's just nice to see faces, it's nice to get out. And um for the most part, the um. The people that are there to um to partake in the meals are are very appreciative and um. It seems like they're sort of happy to be getting out of the house too, so anyway, I just wanted to give a shout out to to everybody because um. Running really, really smoothly now and um it's just a really nice thing that the district is is able to do, so that's it.
Dr. Shark, can I jump in for a second on what Ashley was talking about with June second, have you heard from voter services if they're going to be using the buildings?
Um I'm I'm going to assume, uh Mr. Leach, uh we're gonna meet with uh Val Arcoosh, I guess super tense, we'll be with her again tomorrow, one o'clock. And and one of the topics is is the uh the polling places, uh there are ninety-two polling places in Montgomery County, which we are one. Uh she's gonna ask other school districts to 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 help out because some of the spots that there were previous, I think there was over three hundred polling places in Montgomery County. And um uh it's down to a hundred and forty now, and I think she's trying to use schools as as the catalyst for the voting. So I'll know more, I'll know more tomorrow, but I I our 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 position is the same, uh you know, as far as the middle, using the middle school. Um and and our and I agree and and lower, so um those those will, those will be two places, and if anything changes, uh we'll, I'll let you know.
Well, the only two issues or areas I was concerned with would be, one, will we be the ones policing or will someone police the mask use in building? And then two, is someone going to pay or are we paying for re-cleaning of the buildings and D L and, you know, de-sectifying and all that? Whatever has to be done with all the people going through the building?
Was that a question for me, Al?
No, it's just a question in general, I don't know.
Oh, well, I mean, look, I I don't know what's gonna happen, Bill might get some word in flight tomorrow, there is statutory uh requirement that we must allow voting. Uh it's it's a, I forget where it is, it's it's a obscure section, I think it's in the Voter Act. Uh so I guess it'll be a little bit of a tussle in terms of the cleaning, but hopefully. They'll address that with Bill tomorrow without any controversy and the county will help out.
Okay, thank you. I think, just Mr. Leach, a real quick follow-up, you know, our our goal would be, you know, to really confine the area as much as possible. Uh and 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 our hope, you know, would be too, that that the word from the community as well as the county would be that. Every everything, nothing changes as far as social distancing, masks, gloves, et cetera, you know, I I that that would, that would be that place, so. Uh I don't see any of that changing, we're gonna try to to limit, limit the access uh like we always would. And uh regarding some facilities, uh restroom for the workers, but that that that's our goal to carry on, have as normal as day as possible.
Okay, cuz I understand you got the tape, the putting all the setup for six feet apart and all that's gonna be, someone's gotta pay for all that.
My hope, my hope is to find out more tomorrow.
Thank you.
I just have one quick question, it's Patty, um I I'm just curious if anybody knows, um they have a thing going on on social media, adopt a senior. And um I would just concern, do we have everybody adopted yet? Does anybody know? Because I always think, is there that one senior that didn't get adopted yet? I'm not sure what it's all about, my husband's more involved than I am, but um I just want to make sure that there's no senior that hasn't been adopted that. Just concerned about that, that's all.
Dr. Ziegler, is that anything you can weigh on at this time, or would you have to look into that?
So I would have to look into whether they all have, I know that um one parent reached out to me for the names and addresses and uh information for students. But uh didn't feel it was prudent to publicize that out, so uh you know, that that is an individual group on Facebook. I'm not really uh, I'm not following it too closely as we work diligently to prepare for commencement, but I definitely uh, you know. I think they're doing some really awesome things for our kids.
Oh, you are, you are indeed.
No, I mean, they're doing some awesome things for our kids, those parents are doing some really good stuff.
And so are you. Okay, thank you for that.
Very good, um what what I'd like to do just real quickly for new business, uh I just want to introduce Dave Duster real quickly, there's some, there's some things that we've been working on again as far as. Uh you know, uh not only are, you know, the goal of a zero percent tax increase and how we get there. And and use as less fund balance as possible, but there's also some things with with the billing pieces and installments uh that we wanted to share with the board tonight. Uh Mr. Duster, could you just really, just really brief the board on some of our thoughts and and see, and just take a, take a pulse, that would be great.
Thank you, Dr. Shark, uh before I get started, I wanna, I wanna follow up on Ashley's comments. Tomorrow is National Food Service Workers' Day. Uh so for anybody who's taking advantage of the food service program, the food distribution program. It would really be nice uh for you folks to thank the the people who are making all the food and putting in all the hours. Uh in advance of that distribution, so um with that being said, as as Dr. Shark said. As we looked, as we started looking at the budget, we started looking at how we could help the community uh deal with this financial uh disaster that we're in right now. And uh there's lots of potential legislation out there that may or may not uh affect the the payments, the. The discount uh period, the this, the calendar of the property taxes. But we can't, we can't control that legislation at this point in time, but there are a couple of things that we have the ability to do as a school board. That could provide some flexibility to to the community. Um the first one is, we have a uh resolution allowing installment payments of property taxes. Uh our our policy, our resolution states that we we provide them with three uh monthly installments. So it'd be August fifteenth, September fifteenth, and October fifteenth. Uh and if if you make the first payment, um and you make this, you know, as long as you continue making the payments and make them on time. Uh there would be no uh penalty, uh the tax will be paid by uh August or October thirty-first, so you'd be fine. Um we have the ability to change the number of installments. Uh so that we could go to four or even five if we so chose. Um so that's something that the board uh has discretion over. In addition to that, uh we we don't have the ability to really change the calendar. As to when when the taxes are due, but we do have the ability to limit or. Or completely eliminate the penalty assessed, uh which is currently gets assessed if it's, if the tax is unpaid on November first. Now, uh the way our calendar works is if taxes are paid by August thirty-first. The taxpayer is entitled to a two percent discount. If they're paid by October thirty-first, they're entitled to pay at face value. And if it, if they pay after November first, there would be a ten percent penalty. So uh we we can draft a resolution, in fact, we've already had one uh tentatively printed up, uh thank uh, thanks to Mr. Davis. Um but we could reduce that penalty uh to a lower amount, we could make it zero. Uh what we're looking at is the possibility of making it, uh not assessing a penalty through December thirty-first. But if somebody is delinquent at that point in time, the penalty, the ten percent penalty would be assessed. Um so those are some things that we were thinking about that might provide some flexibility to the community. Uh and we wanted to get feedback from the board as to whether those are concepts that you would be interested in showing. Uh and if so, especially with the uh with the installment issue, how many installments you would feel comfortable with? And with the uh the reduction or elimination of the penalty for November and December. At what rate would you be comfortable doing it?
Dave, can I ask the first question, as in, if we do the installments and all, and push everything out. Does that impact our fees on collecting? Will they charge us additional fees because we, as as many installments as we make?
Uh right now, we we have relatively small number of people who utilize the installment method. Um if you have a mortgage and you're and you're escrowing your taxes, essentially, you have a twelve-month installment process. Uh and most people do have the mortgages, uh mortgage companies paying the taxes. Um but to answer the question, yes, uh there there's two, there's two things that will, could potentially cost money. Uh and I don't want to overstate it, but they're there, one is we would have to redesign the uh tax bills. So the printer and the designer will have some cost involved there. Uh and second, uh we do compensate our tax collectors uh based on the number of bills issued, so. If we, if they, if we switch from three to four, there would be twenty-five percent more. Cost for that, it it's it's not a lot, but there would be a little bit more expense.
Thank you, Dave, I I appreciate that, and 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 what, when would this have to be decided upon, Dave, something we'd have to do?
Yeah, yeah, if we're, if we're gonna do this, I I would like to try and make. Yeah, if we're, if we're going to do this, I would like to try and make the, put it on for board action at the next meeting because there will be some time involved in getting the, the new bills signed.
Dave, can I ask one more last question in regards to this? Obviously, most mortgages, most individuals have the escrow through their mortgages. Would there be anything put in place to make sure that the mortgage companies still send it in on time and not give them automatic reprieve to hold that money to the last minute?
Typically, they remit payment in the discount period. It's a rare search, search situation where they even wait till the face amount. So that, we're not proposing, we don't have the ability to change anything on our own regarding discount period.
Okay, thank you. So does, does any of the board members have an objection for us to put possibly a, a couple scenarios up for an actual item for the 12th? And then that can be discussed and voted on at that time?
I think it's a great idea to help the community.
If you went direction, my opinion would be the three installment plan.
Yeah.
Well, we have that in place already.
Okay.
So we wouldn't have to do anything for that if that was the wish. No objection for it being on the agenda for discussion at next month's meeting.
Yeah, I like the idea.
I guess I'm, I'm just looking for a little direction. Obviously, there's three installments at this time. There's also the penalty phase, and then do we, do we move it to four? So I guess I'm looking for a little direction, would the board like to push it to four installments? And then discuss the, the penalty piece to that? Or just leave the penalty piece go and go to four installments?
Let's, let's be discussing both of those options, the penalty phase and the four payments. If we've got, if we've got the opportunity to discuss both of those things, let's discuss both of those things. I mean, if, if you're saying you want direction tonight, I'm not going to give you direction tonight. If you're saying we can discuss both of those things next month, let's discuss both of those things next month.
We can discuss both of those things next month.
Okay, let's do that.
Thank you.
Joey, anything else?
No, sorry, that's, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, I do have one thing. And we, this has been out there for a little bit of a while, and this is the, the kind of thing I like to do, you know, in person, most especially in person, but it just doesn't look like it's in the cards for, for some time. I understand that one of our staff has recently gained a new honorific, and I don't think we're going to be able to see her and congratulate her in person for some time. But I did want to congratulate Dr. Posito on her success in defending her dissertation. So, doctor, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. I appreciate it.
And then, and I, I didn't, I didn't get all of the details. So what was your dissertation on?
I did a study on content specialization at the elementary level. So similar to what we see in secondary schools, how we have math specialists and history specialists employing that model at the upper elementary grades. So I did a study into southeastern PA schools. It was fascinating. Thanks for asking.
Very good. Was it grueling or was it fairly easy? Was it, were the questions very challenging or was it just no problem?
Well, it's behind me now, so it feels like a breeze.
Not as hard as IAP conference, right?
It was enlightening. It was definitely worth, definitely worth it.
Very good. Well, congratulations. Very, very, very happy and proud to have you as part of our staff. And that's everything I had, Dr. Shirk.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. That just takes us to Section 9 and public comment, back to public comment.
Back to a couple of comments. And no guessing, no comments, nothing on the open, nothing on the answer, nothing on the dismissed. So seeing nothing, I guess a motion to, oh wait, there's something in chat. Just popped up. Let's see where it is. Very good. All right. Okay.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second. Are there any questions, any comments, any concerns? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, state your name. And we are done. Thank you very much, folks.
You guys in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Take care, everyone.
Thank you.